Good morning, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here today. We are so excited to have everyone here. We will go ahead and get started. I'm gonna, I will go ahead and pause our beautiful music that we have in the background. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. We hope we can see, you can turn your cameras on so we can see all of your beautiful faces. Por favor, por favor, prender sus cámaras para ver todas sus caritas. Thank you, gracias a todos. Again, we are offering this event in Spanish. You can hear it interpreted into Spanish. Este estamos ofreciendo este evento en español también. Si gustan de escuchar el evento en español, lo único que tienen que hacer es seleccionar su idioma. Si está usando un celular o tableta, puede, este, por favor, tocar su pantalla, seleccione los tres puntos, seleccione idioma de interpretación, seleccione español, y para finalizar su opción, por favor, seleccione finalizado. Si está utilizando una computadora, verá un globo ubicado en la parte interior de su pantalla. Por favor, haga clic en el globo y seleccione español y listo. Gracias. So thank you so much again for being here. We are so excited to have you all here. Estamos muy emocionados y encantados que están todos aquí. Les voy a dar un minuto para las personas que, este, quieren escuchar el evento en español, que se pueden cambiar para interpretación en español. So I just want to give a moment for those who want to hear the event in Spanish to switch over to Spanish and then we will go ahead and begin. Okay, so good morning, everyone. Good morning, my friends. We welcome you today with open arms. We are so excited for our stories that represent us here today. Pathways L.A. has launched Stories That Represent Us, a series of storytime events for children and families. This innovative program utilizes the power of stories to connect elected representatives directly with their constituents, which is all of you that are here today, and allow children to see themselves reflected in our leaders. Maria Bernas, candidate for the LAUSD School Board Member seat in District 2 and Executive Director of Inner City Struggle, will host our event today for families. So we're really excited to have Maria Bernas, and thank you so much, Maria, for being here today. Before we get into our storytime with Ms. Bernas, let us all join in on our singing and welcome song. So I will go ahead and share our song, and we can all sing together. You can unmute your songs if you'd like to sing our beautiful Good Morning song.
Hello, buenos dias. Good day, guten tag, konnichiwa. Ciao, shalom, dobre dien. Hello to all the children of the world. We live in different places from all around the world. We speak in many different ways. Though some things might be different, we're children just the same, and we all like to sing and play. Hello, buenos dias. Good day, guten tag, konnichiwa. Ciao, shalom, dobre dien. Hello to all the children of the world. There are children in the deserts and children in the towns and children who live down by the sea. If we could meet each other to run and sing and play, then what good friends we all could be. Hello, buenos dias. Good day, guten tag, konnichiwa. Ciao, shalom, dobre dien. Hello to all the children of the world. Hello, buenos dias. Good day, guten tag, konnichiwa. Ciao, shalom, dobre dien. Hello to all the children of the world. Hello to all the children of the world. Hello to all the children of the world.
Yay, thank you so much, everyone. Yay, I heard some of you singing. Thank you. And now we're gonna go ahead and give it over to Giovanni.
Good morning, everyone. So yes, we're all so excited to have Ms. Brennas here. Thank you for your patience, and you guys just gave me the boost of energy I needed to attack the rest of the week. Thank you so much. But I just wanted to pause and turn it over to our wonderful CEO that's gonna say a few words introducing Ms. Brennas and some important stuff that's coming up about our elections. So without further ado, Tamika.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tamika Farr, and I'm the CEO with Pathways L.A. It is so good to see your faces here today. We started Stories That Represent Us to connect our leaders from our community with you all through the power of storytelling. Today, we're proud to have the pleasure of having Maria Bernas, candidate for LAUSD School Board Member for District 2. But before I tell you more about the great work that she has done in our community, I like to share information about a very important topic, our upcoming election. The election will be on November 8th. If you haven't already registered, you still have time to go to your designated locations to participate in California's 2022 General Election. There are statewide candidates for the U.S. Senate, Governor, Representatives of Congress, Senate, Assembly Members, and local Board Members. Each election cycle, the public can select the best candidate they feel are suited to deliver key issues that are important to them. This election season has several important positions that are up for election. The winners in this office will have several years to have the power to influence key day-to-day things for our lives. This is why it's very important for you to get out and vote. In addition to candidates, there are seven propositions on the ballot. Our team will add additional resources on how to register to vote and general voter information in the chat, and more information will be sent out in our newsletters and emails. And now, before we turn it over to Ms. Bernas, I'd like to share more about her impressive biography. Before Ms. Bernas advocated for education and housing rights, she experienced many of the challenges that several families face today. She was born in Los Angeles and is the proud daughter of immigrants from Mexico. When her dad suffered an accident that made his job as a gardener very difficult, she and her family had to move to Mexico before, because they couldn't afford to live in Los Angeles anymore. While her father would come to work from Mexico to the southern border of California, Ms. Bernas also crossed over from Mexico to go to school in East San Diego County, where she experienced firsthand inequities in public education. When she was 17, she organized hundreds of families to speak out against racism and injustice that her peers were facing as minorities in their communities. Ms. Bernas went on to graduate from UC Berkeley and then worked as a community organizer to help Black and Brown students at Oakland Public High School. She then went on to earn her master's degree from Harvard University, where she became the first Latina elected student body president of the Graduate School of Education. Ms. Bernas continues to work to help youth development and student rights with organizations like Inner City Struggle. She is the proud parent of two children attending LAUSD and is running as a candidate for LAUSD School Member for District 2. Ms. Bernas, thank you so much for hosting our event today.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me. I am very happy to be here. Buenos dias a todos. Me da mucho orgullo estar aquí ahora. And I am going to share two stories this morning for all of you. And the first, I'm gonna show a PowerPoint presentation that my daughter created two years ago for Latino Heritage Month when she was eight years old, when she was in third grade, and we were all on Zoom because of the COVID pandemic. But we were so happy that our teacher and our school encouraged projects in the class to celebrate Latino Heritage Month and to celebrate important leaders of our community that have worked very hard to make our communities better and to stand up for our rights. So my daughter put this presentation together, and I'm gonna share it with all of you. And it highlights a leader. It talks about a leader named Emma Tenayuka, who was a community organizer, a labor organizer, which means she brought people together. She brought workers together to stand up for their rights in Texas. Okay, so give me one moment. All right, so this is the presentation about Emma Tenayuka by Alegría Sánchez Brennas, which is my daughter. And she's 10 right now in fifth grade, but when she put this together, she was in third grade, she was eight years old. Okay, so I'm gonna start. Emma was concerned about the poverty and injustice suffered by Mexican-American workers. In 1938, wages for South Texas pecan workers were cut. And pecans are kind of like a net. Cases of illness almost doubled among the workers, mostly caused by breathing pecan dust in crowded, closed rooms. So you could see here in the pictures, the workers are working really hard. They're masked, but they're still suffering. They're still suffering and not being taken care of by their bosses. So Emma was concerned. Highly respected for her powerful speeches and her negotiation skills, which means she could talk really good and argue really good. The workers asked Emma to represent them because she was powerful. At the age of 21, so she was young. At the age of 21, she led the city's 12,000 pecan workers in a demand for decent wages and better conditions. So that means they wanted more respect. They wanted to be treated good and be paid good because of the hard work they were doing. So they went and they marched, they spoke up, and Emma was one of the leaders, Emma Tenayuka. At several points, well over 8,000 workers joined the strike, despite their poverty. Even though they were poor, even though they needed to work, they did what they sacrificed. They still did what was right and stood up for their rights. Emma, Emma Tenayuka, she was jailed many times and denied work because of her fierce defense of the poor. She was strong. She was gonna defend the people, the workers, no matter what. Emma would not stop fighting for justice. She would keep going because she knew she was doing the right thing. Finally, because she didn't give up and because the workers didn't give up, the owners were forced to raise the workers' pay. They were gonna get paid more because they stood up. So that's, that's just a little bit of the story of Emma Tenayuka. She's, she accomplished so much more. So my daughter, as part of her presentation, she drew this painting of Emma Tenayuka Tenayuka when, one of the times that she was jailed for standing up, for speaking up. So my daughter traced this, and she did marker, and then she painted. So let me show you the real picture. So this is the actual picture. Emma is 21 years old. What inspired my little daughter to, to talk to other children about Emma is that Emma was very young, and she was not afraid. She was not afraid. And just look at, you know, you look at her face, you look at her eyes. It's, it's, it's power. It has power. It has heart. And she believes in herself, and she believes in others, even though she was in jail for speaking up. Okay, so this is the actual picture, and then this is my daughter's drawing. Pretty good, right? Pretty good. She's very proud. So we have this drawing in our living room. So it's something that hangs up in our living room to remind us of Emma Tenayuka, of her power, of, of just her inspiration to all of us, and to show my daughter that we're so proud of her. You know, she was eight years old, she was in school, at home, but she was trying her best. She was really trying her best, just like the teachers were trying her best, and just like all of you are trying your best, right? In school, with your wonderful teachers, we're all trying our best, and that's what we learned from Emma Tenayuka, and to not be afraid, to never be afraid to speak up. Okay, so that is the presentation by Alegría Sánchez Brennas, my daughter, who's 10 years old and is my inspiration because she's also never afraid to use her voice. And all of you should never, ever be afraid to use your voice. ¿Si se puede? Se dice, ¿si se puede?
¿Si se puede? Wow.
Si, si se puede.
No os oigo.
Si se puede.
¿Si se puede? 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 ¿Si se puede?
Wow, can we just thank a round of applause for not only Ms. Brennas, but for Alegría, that clearly has a future in publishing and books in the near future.
Nomás les quiero, sé que estamos breves en tiempo. I know we're short on time, pero I just wanna show you this book. Is it backwards for you?
No, you're fine, Ms. Brennas.
Okay, okay, les quiero enseñar este libro, Dolores Huerta. A hero to migrant workers, a hero to farm workers. Farm workers are the people that are in the fields, and they do very hard work to pick up the food that we eat, strawberries, cabbage. So many of the fruits and vegetables we eat are picked up by people. They're called farm workers. And for many years, they don't get paid very well. They're not treated very well. And Dolores Huerta, who is one of my greatest, greatest heroes, sheros, heroes, she worked very, she was a teacher. She started as a teacher, and she worked with farm workers in her community here in California, very much like Emma Tenayuka, to stand up, to organize, to use her voice so farm workers could get better paid, more respect, and, and, and just better treatment. You know, we all want to be treated good, right? If we go to school, if we go to work, we go to the park, we all just want to be treated good. If we do work, and, you know, any work we do as a teacher, our parents, we just want them to be paid for the great work they do, and that's what Dolores wanted. And she is such a hero. She's still alive today. She's 90, a little over 90. And she's someone, she's a friend of mine, and she is such an inspiration. So I would encourage your teachers to share this book or other books about Dolores Huerta. She's a wonderful, wonderful hero, a woman, also a woman, a mother, a teacher, a fighter. And she also shows us that we should always use our voice, never be afraid to use our voice, okay? Dolores Huerta, and she's the one that started the "Si se puede", you know, so if you ever hear "¿Se puede?", you say "Si se puede", or if you're ever, you know, feel you can't do something, just remember Dolores Huerta. Si se puede, si se puede. Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Because by using our voice.
Let's think, let's think.
Yeah, by using our voice and coming together, yes, we can, okay? Si se puede, yes, we can. And Dolores Huerta, a couple of, a few years ago, when President Barack Obama was our president, he gave her a medal, a Medal of Honor, which is a really, really, really important honor recognition and award. So she's really important. We're really lucky to still have her. Please remember Dolores Huerta, okay? You promised me? Dolores Huerta, say the name. Dolores Huerta. Dolores Huerta. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brennas, for that. Yes, round of applause. That was a very inspirational, as you can see, our kids are loving it. And I think, please also keep us posted when Alegría makes her first official stab at an official book. I'm sure she has a lot of Pulitzer-winning awards coming her way. That was really, we've had books before, obviously, published, but to have that firsthand was really, really quite a treat. And I mean, you know, just the wording, and did she do the visuals also, you mentioned?
So the story of Emma Tenayuka, the story is from a book, from a children's book. And Alegría put it together and summarized the story. She, she did summarize the story. And then she did the artwork at the end. Yeah.
Well, multi-talented. Please thank her on our behalf, and also Dolores Huerta is also one of my heroes. So thank you for bringing such inspirational stories to our Monday. I know you are completely swamped with things, so we really are appreciative of your time here. But before you depart, we had a few pre-submitted questions from the audience that, awesome. So the first being, you know, giving your history in public civic duty and, you know, you volunteering, as you mentioned, what advice would you give some of our youngsters as far as how they can get involved in helping their local communities?
Oh, there's so much we can do to help our local communities. I know we all, you know, really care about people, for example, that don't have a home. You know, that, that might be homeless. You know, in, in my family, anything that we could give, like some of our clothes, water, we give to organizations or families that we know that might have a need. We give, we give what we can, you know, we, whatever we can, we give a little bit. You know, some water, some clothes. We give what we can. Something that Alegría actually does with her brother Emiliano, who's 12, and two of their friends, they do lemonade stands. Last Christmas, they did a lemonade stand to raise money to buy toys for children in South Los Angeles. And they're four, my two kids and their two friends. Actually, it was their friend, and then she has twin sister, so it's five of them. They did a lemonade stand at a market near our home, and they raised $1,000. They actually raised $1,000, and they were able to buy toys that they donated to an organization that, to give toys away last Christmas. So they're gonna do that again this year. They're gonna do another lemonade stand to try to raise money this year. So, you know, they put, we have lemons in our backyard. They did their lemonade. They, you know, added some sugar. And, and they just kept going out there and selling their lemonade. And I'm really proud of them. I'm really proud of them. You know, when they did it, they were 11 and nine years old. And so it's just something to give back. Any little thing you can do, help a friend, even saying something, saying something nice is, is very helpful. You know, sometimes we all have, you know, a sad day or a hard day. We're not feeling too good. You know, saying something to someone like, wow, you're a great friend, or wow, you're really, you know, doing so good, or, you know, I love the work you did. Wow. Just saying something encouraging is really, really helpful, too. You know, we have to put out good things out there, you know, and it makes people feel good. So there's so much different things you can do. And today, because today is, you know, the last day to register to vote, remind your parents, if they're able to, to register, and that's, that's really helping your community.
That is also so pertinent in this day and age, and I think we all appreciate hearing that from you because usually when we think about how we can help our communities, we think large pictures, which if you can, certainly, but those small gestures really do go a long way. And Ms. Brennas, one last one before you depart. We've had, you know, Mary Garcetti, elected officials, but this is an interesting question that our, our little ones kind of submitted to us, and just an interesting perspective from your end. Why, what's the impetus, or why are you running for your selective seat? What is, what's the background before that? What's the fire that you have to run for your school board member?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I am a strong believer in public education and giving opportunities for everyone, no matter where they live, no matter where they come from, no matter who they are, no matter their skin color. Everyone should be able to go to a great school in your community. That should, that is a right we should all have. And as Ms. Farr mentioned, my, my parents are immigrants from Mexico, and they worked really hard. They, you know, were gardeners, they were childcare providers, they were taxi drivers. These are all different jobs they had, and they didn't always get paid very well. And they weren't always treated very well. But they did it for their children. They did it so that me and my brothers could have a better life and a better future than they did. And so I carry them with me every day. What they left for me, which is you have to do what you can to get a good education, but not just for yourself. You have to be a voice for everybody else, for everybody else in, in your community. But it was because of my parents that I went to some of the best colleges in the world, UC Berkeley, Harvard. But for me, the way I pay it back is by being a voice, being a fighter, like Dolores, like Emma Tenayuka, and saying to the world, saying to people in power, we deserve great schools. Our kids deserve great schools because all of you are so smart. You are so, so smart. You could do anything. You could do anything. And we, the adults, we have to make sure you have good schools in your community, that you can go to a great school so you could be that astronaut, that lawyer, that teacher, that engineer, anything, a business person, anything. And so I really feel that's in my heart very much. That's just, just in my heart, you know, and I, I'm so lucky to be a LAUSD parent of a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old, and, you know... And, you know, I know they can do anything. And what I want for them, I want for everybody. And that's why I'm, I'm running for school board because I want to make more changes inside. And I want to work with all of you, your parents, your teachers. I want to work together so we could all come up with great ideas to make our schools the best. And I'm sure you have great ideas. You know, boys and girls and the teachers, I'm sure you have great ideas. So let's work on them together because that's what I do, just like Emma and Dolores. I always bring people together to talk about what can we do to make a positive change. And so that's why I'm running, yeah.
What a powerful statement. And I think those are qualities that I think we don't only look for in our elects, but just our neighbors, our family members. So certainly something that we, we can hope, we promote all throughout LA County. And, you know, thank you so much, Ms. Brenes. I know you, you were super swamped, you're super busy with your candidacy. So we're really appreciative, not only for today, but all your work, the, the work you've done throughout the years. So we wish you the best. And with that, just if you want to hear more from Ms. Brenes, she's actually going to be joining a panel that will put in more information tomorrow morning. But if I can all just, all have you unmuted and have a big round of applause for Ms. Brenes as she leaves us today. Thank you so much, Ms. Brenes.
Gracias, gracias a todas las maestras. Thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Ms. Brenes, have a good one.
Adios, bye.
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 Who heard the story? Before you guys leave. Surprise, you wanted to share with you that.
It's fun, they can.
Giovanni, I think you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I was speaking to myself the last five seconds. Thank you, Terry. But thank you guys so much for hanging in there. We did promise a special raffle surprise that we have ready for you. Who, who, who liked the stories? I found it so inspirational. I think those are stories that usually aren't really told in the public, so I enjoyed it today. And again, if you do want to hear more from Ms. Brenes, she'll be taking part in a policy panel tomorrow with the rest of the candidates that are running on our local elections. I'll put that information in the link. But with that, we have a few more surprises before you leave and with that, I'll turn it over to Terry.
Thank you, thank you, Giovanni. And thank you, my friends, for being here. Don't leave yet. We do have our raffle for today. But before we get to the raffle, I do want to let all of our parents and our teachers know that we do have an evaluation that we would love for you, a survey that we would love for you to, to complete and provide feedback and let us know if you enjoy our story time. If there's something else that you would like us to provide or maybe a different story. Here, so please take three to five minutes to fill out the survey and provide your feedback. We would greatly appreciate your time. And I do want to share my screen so everybody knows what we are raffling off. And oh, before we raffle off, Giovanni, will everybody, every parent and provider get the book for today? Or, oh, there was no book, so are they getting a book?
You will all be receiving a book via mail, yep. And so look forward to that. We still don't know what book it will be, but rest assured, you'll be getting a fun, cool book in the near future.
Oh, thank you. So everyone will be receiving a book for joining us today. So everyone's a winner, remember? We're all getting, we're all getting a prize. And then our big, our, our big, big prize. Let me go ahead and share my screen so you can see the big prize that we are giving away. So we are giving away. Then, yay! So we're going to go ahead and raffle it off. I have everybody's names on our raffle wheel. I want to give everyone a moment to make sure that all of your names are here because I want to give equal chance to everyone to win the tablet. So I do have Marinella, Angelica, Amalia, Kumi, Nancy Flores, Joanna, Elsa Dominguez, Irida, Anna Lopez, Socorro, Bila, Anescoon, Lang, Letty, Michael, Evelyn, Naren Tuya, Pastor Edith Gonzalez, Norman Galvez, Shanti Thompson, Berta Salinas, Maria Lopez, Karine Castanian, Ada Cabrera. Am I missing anybody on the raffle wheel before we see who our winner is today? If you can let me know in the chat box. Lizeth Cuchares, okay, Lizeth, I will go ahead and add you. Hey, anybody else before going once, going twice? Okay.
Yo, Amalia, Luna Aguirre.
Amalia, Amalia, si la tengo aquí, Amalia.
Ah, okay, es que no, y mi nombre está bien, gracias.
Olivia, a ver, Olivia. Me falta Olivia, okay. Alina, somebody else? Okay, going once, going twice, last chance.
Mayor Pocah.
Can see the. Okay. Okay, everyone, so let's go ahead and see who the winner is. Good luck to everyone.
Disculpe, yo no encontré mi nombre.
Angelica, Angelica, congratulations, Angelica. You are a winner for today for the tablet. We will be sending that tablet over to you. Giovanni will contact you to let you know how you will be receiving the tablet, Angelica. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're going to go back to our, we're going to go to our goodbye song and, and for today, but before we end, remember, you can do anything, my friends. What did we learn? We, we can do anything. And don't be afraid to use your voice. If you see something wrong, you see an injustice, if you can stand up and you can make a difference and say something. And remember, you can do it, si se puede. So anytime you feel that you can't do it, tell yourself, si se puede, si se puede, because yes, you can. So everybody ready for our, our song to end today? Yes? Okay, so let's go ahead and play it. Sing along, everyone. You can unmute yourself.